We'll call this meeting of the Common Council to order. Roll call, please.
Kraus.
Here.
Roth.
Here.
Byer.
Here.
Peche.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Brandle.
Here.
Lars.
Horn.
Here.
Thank you. At this time, we'll entertain public participation. Anyone wishing to address the council may do so. We ask that you state your name and address for the record, and then please come to the podium. Charlotte, welcome.
I'm Charlotte Gorznevin, 122 North Pleasant Avenue, Jefferson. I'm here on behalf of the Jefferson Cab Committee. Last Sunday, February 15th, the Jefferson Cab Rides for the Elderly held their eighth annual All You Can Eat Breakfast fundraiser. This was the fifth year it was held at the VFW Clubhouse. We traditionally have picked a date close to Valentine's Day to signify that the charity comes from the heart. Last year, in 2014, the Free Cab Ride celebrated 40 years of service to the seniors of Jefferson. We received congratulations and a certificate of commendation from Governor Scott Walker. Jefferson being the only known city in the state of Wisconsin with this type of charity, it was very rewarding to be recognized. Financing for the cab rides is through donations and fundraisers. Applications are filled out annually, and the participant receives a booklet of tickets. I'm very proud to announce that we have increased our tickets from 52 to 76, an increase of 24 tickets per year. We average about 200 participants, so that could be well over 15,000 cab rides this per year. A person is required to be 62 years old and living independently and not under custodial care to receive the tickets. They need to call Bertie Langhoff at (674) 5294 and request an application. There is no financial information involved in this application. I think this might be something that older people are a little leery of coming down and applying because they're afraid they're going to have to do something with finances. So there's nothing involved there. So I thank you all for your time and attention, and please conflate this information to any elderly seniors you know. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Charlotte.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Counsel, I'd like to introduce Charlie Boise here from Watertown, who's going to put up 24 apartments, 212 units on Rindell Street up there. And he's also going, anybody that's going to rent from him, he's going to give 24 certificates to the golf course for a free year of golfing and a free year of anytime fitness over there. So it's really a boost for taxpayers of the city of Jefferson to have Charlie. And I'd like to introduce Charlie here.
Hi. I'm Charlie. I own Basketball Development and Management. We build, manage, and own apartment buildings. Jim found me out a few months ago and saw a project I currently have under construction in Beaver Dam and liked what he saw. And so thought it would fit good on his land down there. So between Jim and Tim, they asked me to come down and introduce myself. We're just in the beginning process of getting in all of our engineering and CSM to get redone for that property. So it looks like the zoning is all complying with what we want to do with what the city would like to see out there. And I hope that we're going to start digging in spring and create some money for you guys.
Great. Thank you, Charlie. It's great to meet you, and we appreciate your interest in investing in Jefferson. Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else? I do have one announcement I'd like to share. The Jefferson Historical Society, at the quarterly meeting held on Sunday, February 15th, honored Richard and Marion Hager as Volunteers of the Year. Congratulations to Mr. and Mrs. Hager, and thank you for your many years of service to the Jefferson Historical Society and the Jefferson Museum. There's a new and interesting display at the museum which you are all encouraged to view. It is a large display on the Hager Brewery and its founder, Rudolph Hager. The Hager Brewery in Jefferson was the largest brewery outside of Milwaukee in the state of Wisconsin. At the World's Fair in St. Louis, Hager Beer won the silver medal, beating out all the large and better-known Milwaukee beers. That medal is on display in the museum. Following that victory in St. Louis, Hager began using the model, "The beer that made Milwaukee jealous." I'd like to encourage everyone to visit the Jefferson Museum in the lower level of City Hall here and to support the Jefferson Historical Society. At this time, I'll move on to number three, our main oral appointments. We're just going to be, I'm going to be submitting just one name tonight, and that's for an appointment to the redevelopment authority, and that is Jennifer DeCray. And I would ask for council approval of that.
I move to approve the appointment. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Mr. Miller.
Miller.
And we're blessed to have Mrs. DeCray here tonight. Thank you, Jennifer. We appreciate your willingness to serve. Move on to proposed ordinance number 2-15, an ordinance to amend Chapter 33 of the City of Jefferson Municipal Code as it relates to the municipal court for the city of Jefferson. Alderman Peche, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Upperman, fellow council members, and citizens of Jefferson. City of Jefferson Propose Ordinance Number 2-15, an ordinance to amend Chapter 33 of the City Code as it relates to municipal court for the city of Jefferson. Statute 33-1, there is hereby amended and established a municipal court under the provisions of Chapter 755 Wisconsin statutes to be designated as municipal court for the city of Jefferson, which shall consist solely of the city of Jefferson. Due to its length and in lieu of reading the complete text of this ordinance, a complete copy is on file at the office of the city clerk and is available for public inspection. I would so move.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Byer, please. Any further discussion? I'm going to ask Ben to give a brief summary. We did discuss this at the committee of the whole this evening, but for the benefit of those that were not at that meeting, we'd like to ask Attorney Brandmeyer to provide a brief summary.
This is the official ordinance that will establish the city of Jefferson Municipal Court. We had dissolved our central Jefferson Municipal Court, and this ultimately will reestablish our city of Jefferson court. And if the council has any questions on that establishment, I can answer those.
Any questions, Ben? There being none, and if there's no other further discussion, all in favor of approval of ordinance number 2-15, please signify by saying aye, as Rita calls your name. No, if you're opposed.
Roth.
Aye.
Byer.
Aye.
Peche.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Brandle.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Horn.
Aye.
Kraus.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Move on to Resolution Number 101, tonight's consent agenda. Alderman Byer, please.
Honorable Mayor, council members, and citizens, City of Jefferson, Resolution Number 101. Be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that the consent agenda for February 17th, 2015, is hereby adopted. The consent agenda for tonight includes vouchers payable for December 2014 in the amounts of $106,499, January manual checks for $129,695, and vouchers payable for January 2015 in the amounts of $490,035. Payroll summary for February 6th, 2015 in the amounts of $135,783. Council minutes from February 3rd, 2015, minute meetings of the Common Council. Licenses as approved by regulatory committee. We had a special Class B license, beer and wine license, for the Jefferson Rotary Rot and Burger at Jefferson Fair and Park Activity Center on August 17th, 2015, and a wine license for the Watertown Kiwanis Winter Wine Fest and Craft Show at the Jefferson Fair Park Activity Center on March 14th, 2015. I would so move.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Roth. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye, as Rita calls your name. No, if you're opposed.
Byer.
Aye.
Peche.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Brandle.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Horn.
Aye.
Kraus.
Aye.
Roth.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Move on to Resolution Number 102, a resolution to modify the security interest in the city of Jefferson's low-income loan program. I'll turn it over to Administrator Frey-Tague.
Thank you, Your Honor. Before you read the resolution or it gets introduced, and before Ben takes over, I thought I'd just start by saying that while we have talked about this in the past, the proposed development that Charlie spoke of a few minutes ago is located in Tax Increment District Number 7 on the north side of Rhino. And Charlie is indeed correct that most of the local approvals are in place for this one. The property is zoned appropriately. One thing Charlie and/or Jim would need to do is get a new certified survey map because the parcel size will change just slightly, and I think he's intending to try to do that in March, should this matter be taken care of this evening. In addition, he'll need a site plan review. You know, nice development. You know, one time we were hoping that we'd have about 24 units on that north side of Rhino, but that we'd have underground parking. That just wasn't meant to be. I don't think the market at that particular location was sufficient to support that type of development, but this is pretty good. This is about a $2 million development, about $1 million a building, I would suspect. And one thing that is becoming more and more apparent to me is as I meet and talk with people like Nestle and Tyson, Gennerak, Anderson Machining, some of the community's larger employers, seems pretty clear to me that, you know, we're starting to have a workforce housing problem or issue here, and some of these companies are employing people that drive a long way. You know, Beloit, Rockford, Racine, Kenosha, and how much of that is related to lack of available workforce housing in the community, I'm not sure, but I'm sure that it's a contributing factor. And when you think about it, I think the last apartment units built in the community, I think, were in '07, just before I came, and those are the eight plexes that are back of Speedway in there. There hadn't been any new apartments built since then. What Ben's going to chat with you about in a few minutes is moving the city's security interest, and, you know, I tend to think this is a pretty good deal. The city has a junior mortgage on the blue piece of property for a housing loan that it extended to Jim a couple of years ago. In order for Jim to pass clear title to Charlie, we need to move that mortgage obligation. It's proposed to move down on the L-shaped piece of property, and as Ben will tell you, that would be, that loan would be re-secured in a senior or first-position mortgage on that property. So we're moving that mortgage from about a 2.7-acre piece to about a 7.1-acre piece. So I think it's an enhancement for the city's security ultimately on the repayment of that loan. And the one thing that Ben will point out is Jim did build a maintenance structure near the old site of the old clubhouse, right there. At some point in time, Jim has indicated that, you know, through a certified survey map process, he will create this lot right here, and when that happens, we would come back to the council to, you know, release this from the mortgage obligation that we would be moving, or we're asking the council to approve tonight, so.
And just to follow up a little bit on what Tim said, and get my computer back up. The $130,000 was initially lent for soft costs or engineering, surveying, engineering costs, architectural costs for a low-income housing project that we had contemplated going on there. When we went through the developer's agreement, we used that L-shaped piece of property as our surety to make sure that the developer would be able to meet their debt service, his debt service, its debt service, because it's an LLC, over the life of the term. So instead of requiring a bond or something, or a line of credit where we do it years ago, we use that L-shaped piece of property for that security to meet the debt service. With this development that's proposed for this site, there would be enough increment, if it is assessed out at what we think it will be, for the developer to meet its debt service. And in the developer's agreement, we contemplated releasing our surety for that L shape once he's met his debt service. So I anticipate that coming back. But Tim's correct. We would be first in line on, in terms of knowing other liens or anything against the debt service, and ultimately, the council would be asked to consider, I think, releasing the maintenance shed for the golf course, which still needs to be surveyed off, which is something that Tim and I would recommend to the council to do. Thanks.
Okay. So that we can get into the discussion portion of this, I would ask Alderman Brandle to please read the resolution.
Honorable Mayor Upperman, fellow council members, citizens of Jefferson. City of Jefferson Resolution Number 102, a resolution to modify the security interest in the city of Jefferson's low-income loan. Whereas on December 31st, 2012, the City of Jefferson Common Council approved a $305,000 total low-income housing loan to developer Keen Enterprises LLC. Whereas $130,000 of that loan was dispersed to develop fees to be used towards soft cost or architecture, engineering, surveying, et cetera, for a low-income loan housing development within TID Number 7. Whereas the security for the loan was a second mortgage and mortgage note filed against the property, recorded in the Jefferson County Register of Deeds as document number 1322919. Additionally, Mr. James Keen, principal of Keen Enterprises LLC, has personally guaranteed the repayment of the $130,000. Whereas the anticipated low-income housing development did not transpire, currently, the mortgage recorded against the property in TID Number 7 is creating an impediment to the developer for sales. Whereas, in an additional surety, developer previously pledged the L-shaped property to the city to ensure that the city could meet its debt service on the general obligation bond necessary for the extension of Rhino Street through TID Number 7. Whereas the developer currently has a binding real estate sales agreement for multifamily housing, which offer is contingent upon developer's ability to deliver clear title, is anticipated that once the multifamily housing is built, developer will have created enough increment to meet the debt service in TID Number 7. Whereas the developer's agreement for TID Number 7 anticipated the necessity of the city to partially release property within TID Number 7 to allow build-outs to support the city's debt service for the general obligation bond. Therefore, be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of Jefferson, that the second mortgage filed against the property that is subject to the offer in TID Number 7 be released in the total amount of $130,000, be recorded against an L-shaped piece of property along Dewey Avenue owned by the developer outside of TID Number 7, as approved by the city administrator and city attorney. Be it further resolved that no additional funds shall be dispersed to developer for low-income housing without the future approval of the city, the developer's agreement be amended accordingly, and that the city administrator or mayor are authorized to sign any and all documents necessary to carry out this resolution. I so move.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Byer. Discussion? Anyone have any questions or comments? Jim?
On the initial loan was for $305,000, and I understand $130,000 of this was used towards soft cost for this particular project. Now, does that carry over to the, I mean, does that mean all the architectural work and everything, the new owners going to utilize that?
No.
So that $130,000 is not, was used for architectural?
It was done for Elwood, where he was going to put up 10 condominiums.
So that money is basically gone to another architect?
The note, Mr. Horn, the note that we're creating to secure this within the 130 on the L shape was, is payable within 18 months, so it'll be reimbursed to the city. I believe that's the terms of the note. I have it in my file.
Any other questions or comments? There being none, all in favor of approval of Resolution Number 102, please signify by saying aye, as Rita calls your name. No, if you're opposed.
Peche.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Brandle.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Horn.
Aye.
Kraus.
Aye.
Roth.
Aye.
Byer.
Aye.
Kraus.
Aye.
Roth.
Aye.
Byer.
Aye.
Kraus.
Aye.
Roth.
Aye.
Kraus.
Aye.
Byer.
Aye.
Kraus.
Aye.
Byer.
Aye.
Kraus.
Aye.
Kraus.
Aye.
Kraus.
Aye.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, fellow council members, and citizens of Jefferson. City of Jefferson Resolution Number 103, authorizing deductible option for liability insurance policy renewal. Whereas the city is a member of the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Insurance Mutual, which underwrites the city's liability insurance policies. And whereas the city of Jefferson's current policy year for its liability insurance coverages ends in May 2015. And whereas the Finance Committee has been reviewing options to reduce costs for liability insurance coverages, including adding a deductible option for its liability insurance line. And whereas the Finance Committee is recommending that the city renew its current liability insurance lines with the addition of a $5,000 deductible option for the following coverages. General liability, law enforcement liability, public officials' errors and omissions liability, and automobile liability. And whereas the annual aggregate deductible for these coverages is $25,000, and the annual premium savings are estimated at approximately $14,000. And now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that it herein authorizes adding a $5,000 deductible option for the city's liability insurance lines of coverage upon renewal of these coverages for the 2015-2016 policy year, beginning May 2015. I would so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion?
Honorable Mayor, have we seen or had to pay any deductibles over the last, have we monitored that? Are we paying deductibles for general liability, law enforcement liability that may exceed the $14,000?
I would say, Jim, that currently, most likely, we don't have a deductible. So looking at our eight-year history, which we talked about today, there wasn't a year when we would exceed premium savings in the past eight years.
Any other questions or comments?
So this is a choice?
It's an opportunity. Then yes, it is a choice.
Mayor, this was unanimous of finance.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? There being none, we'll call the question. All in favor, please signify by saying aye, as Rita calls your name. No, if you're opposed.
Miller.
Aye.
Brandle.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Horn.
Aye.
Kraus.
Aye.
Rose.
Aye.
Byer.
Aye.
Peche.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Resolution Number 104, a resolution to reject the Center Avenue bids.
Thank you, Honorable, excuse me.
Alderman Horn, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, council members, citizens of Jefferson. Rejection of, Resolution Number 104, rejection of bids for the 2015 utility and street improvements, South Center Avenue and Dane Street. Whereas the city of Jefferson publicly opened bids for 2015 utility and street improvements within South Center Avenue and Dane Street, which consisted of a base bid A and one alternative bid item on February 5th, 2015. And whereas these three bids were received and publicly read, ranging in cost from $1,532,793 to $2,499,457. And whereas the cumulative total of the identified low base bid from Forest Landscaping and Construction was $1,532,793, approximately $240,340, or 18.6% over the pre-bid engineering estimates, that to award the bids is not in the best interest of the city. And whereas in the opinion of the city engineer, Jefferson Utilities Manager, and Wastewater Superintendent, the bid should be rejected and the project rebid. And now therefore be resolved by the Common Council of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that herein rejects all bids submitted for the 2015 utility and street improvements in accordance with Wisconsin Statute 62.15 Parent 5, and be it further resolved by the Common Council that herein authorizes the city administrator to authorize rebidding the project with modifications recommended from the project engineer and city staff at the earliest possible date for construction in 2015. I so move.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Lars. Discussion?
When do you think the earliest date could be for the second bids to come back?
Right now, what we're anticipating is that the bids will go back out next week, and what we would be looking at is a new bid opening on March 12th. We really had a lot of interest in this project. We had qualifications from bidders from at least seven bidders, and it was a little disappointing to have only three bidders. After the fact, we found out that we were competing with several DOT projects and several large projects in the Madison, Milwaukee areas, therefore contractors could not commit to our project as well. So that's where after we had gone through, based on the cost of the project and what we had seen on other projects actually coming in under bid, that we thought it was the best interest to reject these bids. We have made some changes to the bidding. Those include expanding the construction dates. It wouldn't expand the length of project, but it would give the contractors more flexibility to not necessarily construct it in the spring, but possibly later in the summer. We did get some of that feedback. In addition, that may allow us to reduce some of the costs that you may see from de-watering out there. So it's in our best interest, I believe, at this point, to reject the bids, get it back out there, and we're anticipating that, we're at least hopeful that this gives us a better opportunity, more bidding opportunities, and reduced cost overall.
If for some reason there's, you wouldn't have bids the second time, can we go back to the ones we're turning down now?
No. Once we would reject these bids, it's a completely new bidding opportunity at that point.
All right. Thank you.
This was unanimously recommended by the Streets Committee.
Thank you. So just so I understand, it was a matter of timing, and the bids came in higher, and we believe that the lack of a full slate of bidders, lack of more bidders, was due to the timing of the project as it was laid out in the previous bid process, and that by providing a little bit more flexibility in the timeframe, it will entice more people to bid, more companies to bid?
That's what we anticipate. We have also gone through as Wastewater Engineer and Utility Department and removed several items that were not necessarily major points of the project, but to potentially reduce some of the costs as well.
Thanks, Bill. Anyone have any other questions or comments? There being none, all in favor of Resolution Number 104, please signify by saying aye, as Rita calls your name. No, if you're opposed.
Brandle.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Horn.
Aye.
Kraus.
Aye.
Roth.
Aye.
Byer.
Aye.
Peche.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
It's unanimous to rebid the project. Thank you. Resolution Number 105, a resolution to accept the Luban Park bid. Alderman Miller, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, fellow council members, and citizens. City of Jefferson Resolution Number 105. Whereas the city of Jefferson received 11 bids from contractors interested in completing the stormwater pond and restoration work in Luban Park, and whereas the values of the base bid range from $76,545 to $156,941. And whereas the pre-bid engineering estimate from Town and Country Engineering was $108,227. And whereas the value of the identified low-qualified base bid is $76,545.70. And whereas the city staff, along with Town and Country Engineering, reviewed the project bid. the city staff along with Town and Country Engineering reviewed the project bid results and recommends award of project bid to Kraus Excavating Incorporated, whereas the award is subject to obtaining necessary permits from the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources. Now therefore be resolved by the common council of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that it herein approves the bid in the amount of $76,545.70 to Kraus Excavating Incorporated, and be it further resolved by the common council that the mayor and city administrator are herein authorized and directed to execute any contract or document associated with the above action on behalf of the City of Jefferson upon the review and consent of the city attorney. I so move.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Kraus. Discussion?
I can fill in some details on this. As you recall, the bids were rejected on this last September, at which time the bid, the low bid that came in was $126,544. At that point, we asked Town and Country Engineers to go back and rebid, or to redesign the project at a smaller footprint. This project was then bid with the smaller footprint as the small, as the base bid, and the original design, which was a larger pond, was the alternate. So in this case, we got 11 bids back. We're very happy with the number of bids that we got back. The low bidder was Kraus Excavating. There was some errors that we had found in several of the contractors, including Kraus. Kraus originally submitted their bid at $79,562. It was an obvious mistake that was found when they submitted it. We gave, we talked to Kraus, they confirmed their error and resubmitted that bid that day, which brought the bid back down to $76,545.70. They were the low bid on both the base and the alternate bids. Originally, this project had $100,000 estimate, or $100,000 budget. We have approximately $80,000 in funds left, so going ahead with the base bid of $76,000 allows us to complete the project underneath the original estimate, or underneath the original budget.
Thank you, Bill. Any questions? Just to clarify, what do we do with the other $20,000?
The other $20,000, we've, a large portion of that's been spent on design services up to this point. Anything that would be left, I would talk to the Parks Department, and we may be able to look at using that money on trails or the other phases of the pavilion out there.
Perhaps planting a tree?
Soils, wetland delineation, surveying.
So it was soft costs?
For this project.
For this project. Just, I wanted to clarify that.
Sure.
Okay.
This was also unanimously recommended by the Streets Committee.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure, because the bid was submitted reversed, it is allowable for us to correct that and switch it back to what it should be?
Yeah, I talked to Bill about that last week. When the bill was submitted, it was clear from the documents that the only plausible explanation, which the case law allows you to do, is to correct an error, an obvious error, because you wouldn't do the alternate, bigger, for less money. So that correction is, and you can also go through the bid documents and correct mathematical and other issues too, I mean, there's other case law on it, but I talked to Bill, actually called and we spoke at it at length last week, so.
Yep, so it is allowable.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? There being none, all in favor of accepting the bid for Luban Park, please signify by saying aye as Rita calls your name, know if you're opposed.
Lars?
Aye.
Horn?
Aye.
Kraus?
Aye.
Ruth?
Aye.
Fire?
Aye.
Peachey?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Thank you, it's unanimous. We will strike Resolution Number 106 from the agenda tonight. It'll be brought back at a future date. Resolution Number 107, a resolution rescheduling the March 17th to March 24th, 2015 meeting and canceling the April 7th, 2015 meeting. Alderman Miller, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, fellow council members and citizens. City of Jefferson Resolution Number 107, be resolved by the common council of the City of Jefferson, that the regular common council meeting night of March 17th, 2015, is hereby rescheduled to March 31st, 2015, and the April 7th, 2015 meeting of the Jefferson Common Council be canceled due to the spring election. I so move.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Kraus. Discussion?
Mayor, we're not rescheduling our April 7th meeting?
Administrator Freitag, please address that.
We don't have plans to right now if we move the meeting on the 17th, and then let me just say that, keep this in mind as you consider this matter, that on the 17th, the mayor and the council president will be out of state and won't be able to attend that meeting. That doesn't mean we couldn't meet. I think we would probably suggest the most senior tenured alderperson chair the meeting that night if you want to meet on the 17th. But what we are trying to do is, thinking we try to move that meeting date closer to April 7th, and we would cancel that meeting because of the spring election and not reschedule it, and try to have enough meetings where we wouldn't go more than a month without a meeting. Typically, that's, we need that so we can pay our bills.
I believe March 17th is also St. Patrick's Day.
I believe it is.
Play into it, though.
I think maybe, I think maybe, maybe the concern that-
It fall on the 17th this year, huh?
Maybe the concern that Alderman Peachey is raising is one that I share, in that will, if we cancel the April 7th meeting without rescheduling it, we will have four weeks between meetings from March 24th to the first meeting in April, which would then not occur until April 21st.
I think the better alternative would be to move the 17th to the 31st, March 31st, that Tuesday, and then that cuts the time in between meetings. So I would, I would, I would think the better, the better schedule would be to move the March 17th meeting to March 31st, and to just cancel the April 7th meeting unless there's some emergency or some other reason we would need to meet, and then just run with the next meeting being the 21st of April. Doable for us, I mean, if staff, on staff's end.
Is there a problem for any council members? Does the 31st work?
My only concern is as long as there's no issues with the bills, you know, late fees and all that, as long as we're fine with that, I don't have a problem.
So, you've heard what the recommendation is from staff? Is there an interest in offering an amendment to the resolution that is, it has been presented to change March 24th to March 31st?
I'd move to amend the 31st.
It's been moved, is there a second? I'm sorry. I'm going by, I'm going by a wrong printout of this that I got back there. Okay, so it is, has been read that way?
Yes, this is March 31st and April 17th.
Okay, I apologize. That's on me. So, you wish to withdraw that? Okay, I took you down the wrong path there, I apologize. Okay. All right, if there are no other questions or comments, motion has been to reschedule the March 17th meeting to March 31st and cancel the April 7th meeting. Is everyone clear on that? Thank you. All in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye as clerk calls your name, know if you're opposed.
Kraus?
Aye.
Ruth?
Aye.
Fire?
Aye.
Peachey?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Horn?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Next, we welcome Mrs. Jennifer DeCray and Mark LaFave to present an update on, to the common council on the medical college. Welcome, Jennifer and Mark.
Thank you for having us.
We're happy to be back. Good to see you. Little bit of an update. First of all, we want to thank the council again, and the city of Jefferson, for the gift of the land for the campus, because as we travel around the state, as we talk with people, the two most important and most significant developments have been the gift from the city, that this college has a home here in Jefferson, and that of course, the bolt company is engaged pro bono to provide services to get the campus shovel-ready. So those are two very large themes, and the number of people who have expressed to us in very intimate meetings how significant it is, what all of you folks have done, I've lost count.
We get a lot of wow. That's incredible.
Lot of wow factor. So remember from our earlier discussions that we're looking at this project piece by piece, we're building a consortium to launch this large idea, and you go right down the list of potential partners in this consortium, and there's something exciting to talk about. At the federal level, we have the attention of no less than Representative Paul Ryan, who chairs the House Ways and Means Committee now. Through Ben Waymire, we were able to have a meeting with Representative Ryan. Jennifer and I had the opportunity to sit with him at his office in Janesville and talk about this. He said, "What do you want from us? What do you want from me?" And we said that we want to be able to say that we have met with you, the Chairman of the House Ways and Means Committee, we've talked about this college, and that we have your enthusiasm for the project. And he said, "You can go out and tell anybody that. I'm very enthused about this project." And about our residency approach.
He was, we talked briefly about, you know, what we've talked about all along, which is going and be going with communities, with cities, forming partnerships with them so that they can sponsor a resident or endow a resident for their community, and he loved that idea. He loved the grassroots, go back to the communities. If the community is interested in having a resident, they are able to do that, and it will only be funds for a resident in their community. And so he was very excited about that idea. He thought that was a wonderful idea. I think he looked at that as a blueprint for this particular college, and we were happy to have his enthusiasm.
Similarly, we have talked with Senator Tammy Baldwin's staff, and there is interest there in terms of primary care residencies. She was very much involved with the recent VA legislation, which is providing 1,800 new residencies across the United States in the area of primary care and mental health. Our students will be able to compete for those residencies, so there's a lot of positive energy there. The state of Wisconsin, we have had myriad conversations with great appreciation to Mayor Dale for opening that up and keeping a vibrant dialogue between the city and the state. We have bipartisan support for this, not only from Senator Fitzgerald, Senator Nass, Representative Horlocker, but we also have strong support from the Dean of Legislators, Fred Rissler. So we've got across-the-isle support. What looked to be like an emerging executive-driven budget at the state level now has all hands on deck, so there's a lot of legislative interest about what's happening, particularly not our concern, how the University of Wisconsin may or not, may or may not be challenged, but all of a sudden, there's a lot of grassroots interest. So we are working to advance conversations at the grassroots to engage people about this because there are three ways that we can get into the 2015-2017 biennial budget, and that's through legislative bill that could be sponsored bipartisantly, we can get in through joint finance, we can get in through the Building Commission, and actually, the fourth is we could actually get into the budget as it currently exists. So there's good conversation going back and forth, there's a lot of work yet to be done there, but on the federal level and on the state level, those pieces of the consortium feel right, they feel good.
Well, we're currently in the process of getting meetings with all the heads of all the agencies of the state. Now, yesterday, there was some shifting on those agency heads, among the three or four of them, but we're working on getting in to talk to the head of the Child and Family Services Department and the-
Health Services Department.
Health Services Department.
Kitty Rhodes.
All people that we have worked with in the past, but we feel that it's very important to have the support of all the department heads when we talk about going into this legislative budget, because the more that they push also from a different angle than we do, that's, if we can gain their support, that's going to be better for the college.
We are out talking with philanthropists, and we have been for many months now. There is a good degree, we'll be candid, there's a good degree of education that's going on here. This isn't like going out to sell an existing entity. This is new. This is a new idea. This is a new way of looking to educate healthcare providers and to deliver medicine in this state. But the learning curve is, and time to give, feel right. We've got a lot of good conversations going on there. There's also kind of the outside-in, inside-out model that we talk about, which is private philanthropists can leverage the state, the state can leverage private philanthropists. So we're working now, talking with folks who have the capacity to influence the governor and his thinking on the budget and our place in that. At the same time, we're also looking at ways that the state can come in to partner with philanthropists that we've worked with historically, who are very interested in the project. Is the pace good right now? I would say that this is the hardest work we've ever done, and that it is thoughtful, it's moving ahead. Everyone has internalized that this college is a reality.
From all across the state.
All across the state, wherever we go.
As we've talked to people, as we've been at events, and people have come up to us, someone that Mark had worked with for years, who was a major donor to the UW, he saw after the first of the year, Paul Ryan had talked to him, and he said, "Well, I know Mark, I've worked with, I've worked with them. Well, this is their idea, and we're really excited about it." And so we hear a lot of, not if the college is going to happen, but the college is going to happen, and we, of course, have asserted that all along.
Lot of buzz, lot of momentum. Also, an aspirational view of what the college can become, so that we're not, and this isn't negative, not merely educating primary care physicians to address a shortfall in the state, but we're looking at the continuum of care, and we have been challenged to look at, you know, physician assistance program, pharmacy, nursing, an entire College of Allied Health Sciences, and this has been principally by philanthropists who said, you know, "If you can deliver this, we're interested in that." So I think this idea is naturally emerging and getting larger as we move along. Board recruitment, as you know, we have three existing board members. We have now four invitations out to extraordinary potential board members. I spoke with each of them this morning, saying that I was going to be with, Jennifer and I are going to be with you all tonight, and that we wanted to make sure that our conversations were on track. They are. These are people that represent a wide spectrum, you know, leadership in osteopathy, leadership in internal medicine.
Family medicine?
Family medicine, and leaders who are on the national stage in terms of healthcare issues. So that's going well, and you'll hear more within the next coming weeks of our success. It's starting to lock down a larger board which will have significant reach. The spectrum of conversations that we've had are a hundredfold and across every topic area. Recent conversations with one of these country's largest companies in terms of housing. We're looking at student housing on campus. It's starting to lock down a larger board, which will have significant reach. The spectrum of conversations that we've had are a hundredfold and across every topic area. Recent conversations with one of these country's largest companies in terms of housing. We're looking at student housing on campus. We're looking at what you talked about here, the shortfall of housing within the community. We're looking at the corridor that's going to exist between the college campus and downtown, the, you know, revitalizing, well, the rebuilding in part, creation of that corridor, the revitalization of downtown. I mean, I don't think there's any conversation that we haven't had that doesn't exist the meaning and richness of what we've got going on here. I spoke today with the Bolt Company, greetings from them. They are looking at a late winter time to get back on the site and to begin to do all the work. As you know, in our land contract with you, thank you again, Ben, for all of your work. We have certain performance dates. Bolt is on top of that, feels comfortable about it, feels good about it. In May, we're going to be proceeding with the first step in accreditation for the college. So that's, you know, going to be underway and moving forward. Other things?
We're in the process this week of starting to talk with the web designer and the designer of the materials that we'll have for social media. We're going to get a website going. We want to have updates on that website. We want to have social media that we can put out to people, the people that we've already had these discussions with, keep them up to date on what's going on.
We are getting such profound attention, not only statewide, but nationally. What's going on in Jefferson, Wisconsin has become a hot topic out there on social media. When articles appear in the local newspapers, Watertown, Jefferson, these have been picked up by the Associated Press, and there's been a lot of widespread interest. So we want to fit into the entire network of social media and to have the requisite presence. So we'll have a website up and running in the not-too-distant future, which will be good as well as a continuing source of information and update for all of our partners that we'll have.
So those are, that's a brief update. And we're continuing to schedule meetings weekly. And anybody that you feel it's important that we talk to, we're happy to talk to them. As we said, we're really focusing on the state right now because we really feel it's important, the timing to get into the budget is to meet with those people right now. We were thrilled when we met with Senator Rissler, who is the-
Could have been a problem.
That's what we were told. If you don't have him, you're going to have trouble.
You don't have anything.
And he was charming, and we had a wonderful meeting with him. And he said, "Anything I can do to help you, I will do to help you." So those are the kind of words, that's the kind of meeting we like to have.
He'd spent 50 years developing his reputation and the support for the University of Wisconsin at Madison. Senator Fitzgerald, I think, was very concerned that if he played the, you know-
I'm a UW guy.
I'm a UW guy card, it would have been very difficult for us. To the contrary, there was none of that. Free market enterprise, you've got an idea, you know what you're doing, get after it, and they'll have to-
It's good for the state, and I'm behind it.
It's good for the state, we'll have to compete with them.
So, any questions?
Good. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Comment, sounds like it's going well, and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Looking forward to see dirt moving out there.
Yes.
Yep, absolutely. And again, we've said this before, the energy and the excitement from the Bolt Company is really tremendous, and they're eager to get things moving out there as well.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public have any questions or comments of Mark or Jennifer?
Happy to answer them.
Being none, thank you. We appreciate your good work, and we'll look forward to seeing you again soon.
We'll meet with anyone, any place, anytime, at any hour.
That's what I'm told.
Same bat time, same bat jam. March 17th.
We will be, Administrator Freitag and I will be meeting with Senator Nass and Representative Horlocker tomorrow in Madison, and we'll give them an update as well, pass that along. So if there's no other questions or comments, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Mr. Peche?